This is the last policy committee meeting for this academic year. And it will be, hopefully relatively short. We have a relatively short agenda and we're all dying here. So let's try to kind of plow through this and then we can all take another cold shower. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the PPS Climate Crisis Response Policy. And just to kind of frame up what I think we're going to try to accomplish today is to take this draft, and this is, oh by the way, version 23, and it incorporates a great many suggestions from the community group that brought this policy initially to the attention of the board for consideration. And we've worked it over pretty consistently over the last eight, nine months. And I think we are now at a point where I'm hoping we can finalize the language today that would then be taken out for community engagement in the fall. So even if we all agree on the language today, it's not going to be voted out of committee today because the next step is to take what we have come up with and do a community engagement process around it. So that's where we hope to get by the end of today. So Mary, I think you wanted to kick this off with some comments about...
Since our last meeting, yes. So if you recall at the last meeting, staff, Erin Pressburg primarily brought forward some suggestions for amendments to the policy draft 22. He and Scott then incorporated some of the comments and ideas from the last policy committee to give you the draft that you have before you. Scott, I don't, do you want to talk about the pieces that you worked on? Well, you're muted, so...
It's not a meeting unless I mute myself. Yeah, there is a redlined version that shows the different proposed changes. The goal was, and this is mostly coming from staff, the specific departments that would be implementing pieces of this. And the changes were to give them, at times it was just kind of more flexibility in terms of how to approach it. So some specific language got taken out. I believe the plastic forks are not in the policy now, for example. That doesn't mean they wouldn't be part of an implementation. The other piece is that there were some, again, a lot of good ideas from the community side, but when, for example, Nutrition Services actually looked into implementing some of these, they turned out to be much, there turned out to be a lot of hangups with it. And so it's a matter of seeing, of trying to find one that balance between the particulars that can be in a plan as opposed to overarching policy language. And as the policy itself states, we're trying to get the most carbon reduction slash sustainable practices for the buck. And again, some of these are going to require federal funding because the expenses just way outside our budget. I was reading an article the other day that said something like there are 400 electric buses in the U.S. and about 400,000 in China. That shows what happens when a government gets behind something. So we can just keep our fingers crossed that there's, fingers crossed that in a future, hopefully soon, legislation that there's federal subsidy for electric school buses. So that's an overview. If any committee members or student representatives have particular questions or comments, now's a good time to bring those up. We also met with Mike and Jane and Amy and ran through the language. And while there was some, gee, gosh, I wish you'd left this bit of piece in it. I guess this is something that I think everybody can live with. And I think the one exception I heard from Mike is that he, and I don't know if this is shared by others, but I heard it directly from Mike, would still like to see the committee in the policy. As far as I know, we don't have other committees for work like this in any other policy specified. So I continue to push back on that. And he said, okay, I'll try it with the new board. There you go. It's politics. So that's it. Any questions, comments from committee members first and then student reps?
So if nobody else will go, I will. So first of all, I want to thank everybody for all of the work, the most recent work and the nine months before, probably more than nine months for the community group. And I had a few copy edits, nothing serious. I'll forward it to Mary and you can... But there was one substantive language suggestion that I had on page three under Goal 2.2. Actually, two places where I have a language suggestion. So in Goal 2.2, number two, it currently reads coordinate with the county office of emergency management to develop and distribute accessible and blah, blah. So I would suggest that we add something there, that we add the city. So it would be coordinate with the city and county offices of emergency management. And I don't know if those would then be capitalized or not. Probably not because I think the city calls it the Bureau of Emergency Management. Anyway, to develop and distribute accessible and culturally appropriate communications. And I would suggest adding "and" resources. And I think especially in light of this weekend, the current heat wave, I suspect there was a great deal of room for improvement around coordination across those three public entities to respond to certainly weather events. So that's my first thing. Should I move on to the second?
Sure. Well, why aren't we, any problem with morphing that language? Director Moore and I were prompted by a friend slash parent in the last couple of days who said, why aren't schools, our schools where we have air conditioning open as cooling centers? And the county had never asked us, so we got staff to approach the county. And there was an email that went out to our staff saying, if you can volunteer at one of the centers, that would be great, which told me that if they had more staff or volunteers, there could have been more centers open, which I think is all to the good. So I just want to say that's totally what support that language. Ailey was nodding as well, so...
Okay, so my second one is number three right underneath that. And I think there have been some, there have been some language changes here, so it reads a little off. So it currently reads incorporate climate justice priorities and climate resilience design to inform long-term facility planning.
Wait, I'm sorry, which one was this, Rita?
It's the, it's number three right underneath the one that I was just talking about.
Oh, yeah, sure, okay.
Okay, so I would suggest that... I have two wording options depending on kind of how you want to do this. Anyway, the first would be incorporate climate justice priorities and climate response design into long-term facility planning. So take out the inform. The other option is instead of the word incorporate, have the words use. And that would read use climate justice priorities and climate resilience design to inform planning, the inform long-term planning. So it's copy edit, but I don't know, I don't know whether there's a substantive difference there.
Is there a preference?
I would suggest getting rid of inform, which is weak. And I don't know if integrate is stronger than incorporate. That would be my suggestion. Ailey, do you have anything to add?
I would, my personal preference of those two options would be the first. And I'd be okay with either incorporate or integrate.
Okay, sounds good. Ailey, do you have any inputs or you may be distracted right now? Rita, we lost...
Sorry, I'm on mute. Ailey just texted me, she had to step away from her desk for a minute, she'll be back. I don't know when she has to leave, so...
Thanks.
Anyway, that's all I have.
Nathaniel and/or Oscar?
I don't, I don't have anything for that policy.
Okay. Nathaniel?
No.
Our honored guests, anything you want to chime in with? And if I misspoke anything in my opening, I apologize, please clarify.
I wanted, I wanted to, I mean, I understand, I wanted to go back to the committee and the position for data tracking. And so I understand that we can't put it in the policy because it hasn't been practiced previously to specify something like that in the policy. But I want, but my understanding is the intention is to preserve those concepts through a resolution. And so I wanted to know how that information gets transmitted from, why, two questions. One, how does that intention get transmitted to a new policy committee? And does it go out for public engagement, that concept? And then second, how does the resolution work? Is it a resolution that introduces the policy? Is it a separate resolution? When does that happen?
So this is the first time I'm hearing about a resolution.
In the previous, in the previous drafts, you had listed to be moved to resolution and you put those two reporting and communication specifications. And you had it in the draft, but you had in bold to be moved to the resolution, the resolution.
So I, I think you're right in the sense that we can't promise anything. After we go through public comment, we'll come back with some kind of edits on the policy. And it is what it is at that point. On the other hand, it's not going to be possible to carry out this policy without proper staffing, which is true of all our policies. You know, we have a Title IX coordinator because, I mean, we have policy around issues like that.
So there was never an intention to have a resolution to transmit this intention?
So I think the timeline has changed on us. It would have been my intention to put forth a resolution, but I'm not going to be on the board, so I can't speak for that.
Well, to say the least, I'm disappointed since that was what you all proposed as an alternative. And I think it's kind of embarrassing to have it in all the previous drafts of the document and now at the last minute say that the intention no longer exists. In fact, in the last meeting we had, Scott, where you met with Jane and Erin and Monica, you were pretty adamant that this was going to happen.
I'm just saying I can't promise it, but certainly encourage it and work for that kind of understanding going forward. It's like anything else, Mike, and you know this from being on this side. If it's not in the budget, it's not a commitment.
So what is it that we need here to sort of move forward on this? I mean, I'm here, what I'm hearing you say, Scott, is that you can't, you can't deliver because you won't be here. And what I'm hearing you say, Mike, is you feel like some promises were made by this team about what was going to be in this policy. So what is, what is the thing that we need to sort of move forward in good faith here?
Well, I mean, it's hard for me to say since the concept was proposed by the policy committee. And so the question is, is there a way to put in the record so that this transmits into the future that this intention exists and that the policy committee supports it?
I think, you know, if we're, again, the role of the board and how we direct strategy, we also need to be careful about, you know, what those lanes are and how we articulate that as well. I think, you know, the, my hope is that, you know, I will be on the policy committee next year because, you know, Scott and Rita are both going off the team to provide some through line and some institutional memory of these kinds of things. And I hope that that's a helpful piece for you to hear. But again, that's, I can't promise anything because that's up to the new board leadership that will be doing the committee assignments. But I will ask to remain on the policy committee to help with that sort of continuation and memory of all this amazing work that's gone on to get us here.
So can I ask a question? Is, is there, so as I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, and this is mostly for Liz and Mary. It seems to me that we do have some language in some policies around a periodic report to the board.
We do.
And, and the language is sort of, I think, kind of carefully crafted so that it doesn't necessarily mandate a particular way to fulfill that function, right? I mean, it doesn't say you got to have a position.
I think, I think what we found in some, when we name something, it quickly gets renamed or revamped to something else. And so it's...
Right, right.
Sometimes it loses its meaning in short order, whereas keeping the language high level and say there will be a body that is convened to, to review or to, you know, something like that.
Right. And that makes perfect sense to me because we, you know, even just in my four years, we've had positions that were named come and go and be reconfigured and all that. But would it be possible to add a short sentence here about, you know, the board will receive periodic updates on progress toward achieving the objective of this policy, something like that? Would, would that be acceptable, doable from the staff side?
Mary's looking at me and I'm looking at Mary. But I think this is not about, I think the staff's willingness or ability to do that. We serve the board's interests and if the board wants periodic updates, then staff will provide periodic updates. So I think that's what, what's the, what's the objective and what you think serves the district's interest in execution of this policy? I think that's a reasonable assertion, but I don't think that's...
It's eloquently listed.
Then an annual report on progress in meeting these goals would be appropriate.
So I would, I would propose that we add a line. And we could probably add it to the paragraph right before, it's the one, two, it's the fourth paragraph from the top. And it says, you know, and other efforts that have a lower impact and require major changes to infrastructure can be implemented over the longer term. And then we could just add a sentence saying the board, I don't know, expects requests at least an annual report from staff on progress towards achieving the objectives listed below, something like that. Would that work? Okay, Liz, I'm trying to read your face and not...
Are you, you're talking to me? I thought that was for Ailey and Scott and perhaps Mike. So that's, I think that works just fine from a policy drafting staff perspective to the extent that's relevant. Sorry, I didn't realize that was directed at me.
So that would be, you know, we wouldn't, it would sort of imply that in order to do that, you've got to have some, some staff tasked to provide that info, but it, it leaves the administration hands-free to figure out how best to do that. Okay, I'll make that a formal proposal then, what I said.
Do you want to say at least or just annual?
We can say annual.
I'm good with that.
So did somebody take down the actual words? Because I didn't...
Rachel, Rachel is taking down the actual words.
And we're also recorded, so we can, we can play it back.
Thank you, thank you, Rachel.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rachel.
I think, I think I have it, but I'll take, we'll take liberty with a word or two, just, and you can look at it.
I, I don't think that's acceptable because everything I say is just pristine and perfect, so...
I have requests, annual report regarding progress toward achieving the objectives of this policy. So a sentence, those are the key words. Does that sound right?
Yep.
Great.
Okay. Anything else about this policy?
I have a couple of comments to share. So overall, I feel like the policy changes that have made have been solid. The change to some higher level language has made it tighter and more succinct, and I'm, we're comfortable with that. One of the things I wanted to mention in 2.1.4, an edit was made, and I think there might have been a mistake in, in terms of how the edit was made. Previously, it had said to work with the USDA to advocate for nutrition programs to be less carbon intensive, and that was changed to, to be sourced from regenerative agriculture. And I think my, my hope was that, that both of those would be included so that it would read, work with USDA to advocate for nutrition programs to be less carbon intensive and sourced from regenerative agriculture or and/or, just because the less carbon intensive part captures like the packaging and the transportation, and that's all about using less CO2, whereas the regenerative agriculture is about actually creating a carbon sink to sequester future CO2. So those are two important priorities that, that I guess I would love to see reconciled. So those are two important priorities that, that I guess I would love to, to see reconsidered in adding to that 2.1.4. Shall I go on to my, to my next, or is there any discussion about this one?
Well, can I? Can I, can I ask? So the less carbon intensive was edited out. I'm assuming there was a reason for that?
Well, I, I think this, it was my suggestion to add regenerative agriculture. And I think that whoever made the change misunderstood my request. And I was proposing to add it and they thought I was proposing to replace it, is my guess.
Okay, so Scott, you worked with Erin on the edits, right? Do you remember if there was, do you remember whether it was a misunderstanding or there was an actual reason to edit out the less carbon intensive?
I don't recall any reason. Any problem with that language.
So I guess, I, I would suggest that we add it back with the and/or.
Well, it's a, I think we're, we're seeing it's, it's an and because it's two different parts of the production process. There, there's, there's not a conflict there.
Yeah, except, except it might be difficult to find a product that satisfies both conditions.
Now, this, this, this isn't saying we have to buy products like that. This is saying we're going to work with USDA.
Oh, okay. Okay. So can we just add it back?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Thank you. And then so my other comment was about 1.2.3. And so Scott had mentioned earlier that there was a decision to be a little bit less in the weeds and more general. And in that, the mention of trays and utensils was removed. And I, I just want to, to let the Board know that during the public involvement that, that we already did. There is a, there's a whole lot of interest amongst students and parents in, in seeing those trays and, and single-use plastic utensils removed from school cafeterias, especially the closed campus cafeterias in the K5 level. And so I guess what, what I would propose as a, as a compromise is to edit the language in 1.2.3 to just maybe be a little bit stronger and, and more specific by saying, pursue zero-waste strategies, minimize disposable materials, and fully utilize all materials before disposal with special efforts in school cafeterias or even with, with special efforts in closed campus school cafeterias. I don't know if that would be amenable? Or if you would be amenable to that?
So my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott. My understanding is that there, there was some engagement with the Nutrition Services staff around language about this. And they were pretty, they were pretty clear that they wanted to have enough flexibility to make it doable to comply. And so, I mean, am I, am I understanding that right or?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
So I'm a little, I'm a little reluctant to change this language given that. But I think it's one of those things that will likely come up during the community engagement. And so there, there are future opportunities, I think, to tweak this in ways that, that might be responsive to this desire and also be doable with staff.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, thanks for considering it.
Yeah, I thi, I think this is going to be an ongoing, we're, we're going to be wrestling with this in the, in the public engagement process. And I hate plastic forks, so just want to be clear on that. And we have, the, the staff who actually implement this stuff were really like, please leave, leave the language like this and, and let us figure, figure this out. And we also know that we want to engage students, you know, in something that, that really matters in their day-to-day activities. And this is one area that a number of students have made clear to us that this is, this is where they, this is a, a real engagement point with them. And by the way, the last group of students who from Harrison Park, Brigger, at the school board meeting, Shanice has their contact information. So they will, they will be part of the engagement process. And so we'll, we'll hear from them directly amongst other students.
I had a question for Shanice about the engagement process. So it sounds like there's going to be two parts. One, with the students in the fall and then maybe something this summer? Or is there a plan to do all the engagement in the fall?
That will be taking place in the fall. I'm happy to talk a little bit more about it. I know that's part of today's discussion as well. It's a real conversation that we're going to talk a little bit about.
Hey Shanice, Shanice, I'm not quite catching what you're saying.
Um, I, I, I responded by saying the fall is when the community process will take place. And I know I'm going to talk a little bit more about it. We should do that now.
I, I didn't quite catch that. Could someone repeat it? It was terrible, Shanice, I'm sorry.
What I heard Shanice is that you are, that that engagement is set to happen in the fall and that you would be prepared to talk about it in the meeting right now? If that would work for Rita and the other Board members, is that correct?
That's correct.
Just another one of Liz's many amazing talents.
I know Shanice is prepared to talk about it, so.
I also have a very large air conditioner running next to my head and I'm hot. So my ability to listen in here is minimized. But thank you, Shanice.
All right.
So I, I think if you can, it would be, it would be good. I don't think we need, you know, all the details, but just kind of some sense of how you'd map it out would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. So yes, I think a lot of points were, were made already, but we're really going to do student and community engagement to further shape these themes and language. And I know as we're reflecting on the previous Board resolution and this work now, and there's a indication, especially our, our low-income communities, frontline communities, Black and Indigenous communities and folks of color to, you know, have engagement in this process of, of, of the policy as well. And so as we think about those communities, in addition to our folks broadly, broadly overall, we're, we're really going to have different pockets of thought partnership that taking place in the fall. So just briefly, I know, as, as we're kind of naming these groups, there's definitely students across, across our system who have provided testimony to the Board. Our District Student Council, you know, also has an interest in this work in addition to our Climate Youth Advisory. But we want to be able to visit classes as well and know that there are young people who are on the front lines of this work, especially our Pacific Islander Clubs, Indigenous Student Unions and so on. And so those, those will be some key community and student groups that we also may center the same ways as, as other students who have direct interaction with the Board. And our community organizations as well, like Apano, Opal, Verde and POIC will, will be some contacts that we want to reach that have, in addition, some youth-led spaces that, you know, have Black, Indigenous and people of color engaged in different levels of just climate justice work at the, at the city level and beyond. And so those are some of the stakeholder groups we're, we're going to be thinking of and really just lifting up these themes that we're chewing on now in the conversation and, and getting perspective on further inputs, suggestions, recommendations and, and spaces we can further shape, shape this language. But yes, both of those components will take place in the fall.
Do you have any sense at this point when the community engagement phase will be completed?
Yeah, so we hope to, you know, I think we're having a series of interactions here where we're going to reach classes and, and probably, you know, 15 to 20 different kinds of stakeholder groups. And so I think to give, give that some, some time and energy, I can be aligned here with the timeline of the, of the Policy Committee. But I think it would be fair to give, to give this a minimum time and, and know that we'll, we'll have my team engaged and, and help complete this work as well. But I, I know that there, there is a kind of attention to kind of two different strands of engagement work happening with this policy and with, with our student-facing, student-facing engagement and our community engagement. And so I would, I would hope that we can complete it in, in, in a month's time. And I know there's a caveat there with the, with the timelines that, that other folks may have to engage with, with us in this conversation. But happy to, happy to be, collaborate there on, on timing. But just want to contextualize that it's probably, probably about 20 different touchpoints that we're, we're trying to make.
So a month's
At the time of the year, that is busy.
Yeah, that, that sounds pretty fast to me. I mean, I was thinking, it'd be nice if we could have the results or if the next policy could make, could have the results by the end of the calendar year. And then take this policy up again January or February or something. So anyway, that sounds great.
Yeah, that would definitely, yeah, yeah. I know too, there, there are different kinds of folks, like as I mentioned, who have interacted with the Policy Committee and, and the Board directly. And, and so having, having that equipped time, I think, would, would be beneficial to, to have, have that thoughtful, comprehensive feedback from each of these stakeholder groups. But that's our intention to, to really touch, touch all these folks who, who both have relationships with us directly and who might be engaged in front lines of climate justice work in various different ways. So the end of the calendar year, I think is definitely doable to have that information captured and themes and priorities brought, brought forward to the Policy Committee.
Okay, sounds good. Um, so do we have, do we have anything else on this policy?
Could I, could I add another comment if there's a, the opportunity? I wanted to circle back a little bit on, I, I'm really glad that we were able to add that sentence about reporting back regularly. I think that's something that when we go out for engagement, that people will be looking for some like regular reporting and kind of hearing back on how we're doing on this policy. The piece that is, has still been dropped, I guess, from previous versions was the Climate Crisis Response Committee? Or the notion of something like that, basically? And so my question is, in this reporting back annually, who will be the folks involved in that report? And is it poss, Rita, I think you, you said something about just generally, instead of giving it a name like Climate Crisis Response Committee, it's a body or something more general. And I, I just, it wasn't clear to me, did that make it through in that, in that line that's being added? And what's your, what, what's your thinking around who will be responsible for doing that reporting?
Do you want to take that, Scott, or?
So if, if a committee is going to be a committee of the Board, then we would create it and take responsibility for that. But I think where we have come down is that if there's going to be a committee, it would be a superintendent committee. So that, that wouldn't be part of the policy. I think the language in terms of the annual recording should say the superintendent.
I guess we were hoping that there'd be an opportunity for multiple stakeholders to be part of that dialogue in, I guess, evaluating and reporting regularly. So P, so we, the other previous versions had said, talked about frontline communities, students, parents, teachers, scientists, administrators, businesses, a bit of a laundry list, environmental nonprofits and the PPS Climate Justice Committee. So of course, it doesn't have to like name all those names, but it would be great to, to see other people or other types of groups reflected in that.
I guess my response would be, I'm repeating myself a bit here. We need to be a little careful in policy, in stipulating how, how the district should conduct its work in pursuit of the policy objective. And, and I know staff, well, I think I know, as I recall, staff were concerned about naming a committee or naming a mechanism in the policy that, that could so easily be kind of outdated almost immediately. And that it's more appropriate to have that sort of thing in administrative directive. Am I remembering that right? Am I remembering that right?
Yes, I think you are, as I recall the conversation, Rita.
Okay, anything else on this policy?
I guess one other thing that I would like to add, I'm sorry, I feel like this is a little pushy right now, but I appreciate that the, like, there's so much work that goes into engagement and it's so important to get that right. At the same time, it just, I can't help but feel the urgency around climate change and sort of getting to the next stages of this policy. So I just, just to say, we're really hopeful that we can kind of keep expediting this process as quickly as we can. While making it meaningful, of course.
Yeah, and I mean, I think we heard from Shanice an intention to do it quickly but thoroughly and her timeframe was a lot shorter than mine. But I, next year is going to be tough, especially in the beginning of the school year. It's going to take a little, it's going to take a minute for everybody to get back into the swing of things for, you know, full-time in person. Personally, I think it's better to under-promise and over-deliver than to make promises that we may not be able to keep. So I think the intention is there and I'm going to be off the board as of Thursday. So I can't make any, I'm going to be in the peanut gallery with you all some Thursday. So but I think what we have heard consistently from staff is an intention to do the community engagement as quickly as feasible, maintaining a commitment to doing it comprehensively and thoroughly using the RISJLEMS. So I guess what I would say is, if that's not what ends up happening next year, you know where people live. So, you know, you can hold everybody accountable. Okay, so I think we're going to, I think we've done as much with this as we possibly can at this point. So I want to thank everybody who was involved, you all on the community side who brought it forth. We would not be here, I think, if you hadn't done that. And for all of the staff work that has been going into this over many, many, many months and many versions. And I think, as miserable as I have been over the last few days, I have been a little comforted by the fact that we will actually have a policy, PPS will actually have a policy out of this in the foreseeable future. And it's not just window dressing. So thank you all for allowing me to do my bit to respond to climate change. Anyway, okay. So this is going to be tabled now pending community engagement next fall. And I'm sure a lot of us will be eagerly watching how things progress. Okay, so I want to be attentive to people's needs. It is now ninety-six degrees in my living room and it's probably equally hot in most of your living rooms. So I'm going to ask a question. Do you want to take a short break? Or do you want to plow through? Okay, short break. About eight minutes. So we'll reconvene at five-ten.
And the tip I learned on the internet that has actually been helping me is to put a couple of ice cubes in a towel and put your feet on that. It really does help you cool down. So maybe get a towel and ice cubes during the break.
Or a wet, a cold wet towel on a puff point. I highly recommend the crook of your elbow. That's amazing thing. Anyway, okay, we'll be back at five-ten. All right, so the only other thing on today's agenda is summary of the work that we have accomplished so far. Well, not so far, since today's the last day. The work we've accomplished this academic year, what policies are still kind of in progress and a few policies that are currently on pause. So I don't think this needs an enormous amount of discussion. I want to thank the staff for pulling this together because I actually think it's helpful to have this document that memorializes kind of where we are and what is still, what's pending. So for future reference, I think this might be a good practice for boards in general. I mean, what prompted it was that, you know, Scott and I are leading the Board and there's a fair amount of institutional history here that it will be leaving. So and the work of the Policy Committee tends to be pretty long-term and it's often difficult, even for those of us who are actively aware of what's going on. It's often difficult to kind of keep track of where things are and what we've done and what we haven't and what we have promised to do and all that. So anyway, this document is sort of a transition document for the next iteration of the Policy Committee and the next iteration of the Board. So there are a couple of things under, well, okay, let me open it up for any questions or comments. There are a couple of things I want to say, but let me open it up first.
Just thanks to staff for pulling this together. Clearly, this committee twiddled its thumbs all year. We got a lot done. We got a lot over the finish line, a lot lined up, ready to go. And there's always, seems like the list of, oh yeah, and you need to do this, this, and this as well, never stops. We have some really old parent engagement policies that really need to be freshened sooner rather than later around site councils and remember LSACs? I think that's still on the books. And I'm sure there's countless others that are like, will sail in with a legal need to, like, now. This needs to be changed. But I think this is a great document, both to record what we did and to hand off to the next version Policy Committee Chair Lowry.
Now your call, Scott. That's going to be the incoming leadership's call, so they get to make that decision. The one note I would have on this document is that we had agreed that the complaint policy would continue to be looked at and that what we did with the complaint policy was simply sort of some housekeeping. And so I think it would be important to have that on this document that we intended as this committee to do some more student engagement. We made that promise in several places. So that was something I noted. It felt like it was missing on this tracker.
That's a very good call. That was just an oversight, not an intentional omission. So we'll be sure to add that. Thank you.
And I do, I want to thank Rita for her incredible work guiding this committee. And kind of, I think it was the wisdom to sort of break things down a little bit, to make small groups. And I know we have students on those small groups and I know we didn't always close the loop there and get students involved in the conversations right away. So I really want to thank Nathaniel for his persistence, as well as Jackson and Oliver to elevate student voice and to make sure in this important policy development process that those voices were raised.
And I want to thank Shanice and her staff because it's really been the last, what, two years that we've really said, we actually want to do community engagement, not just post something publicly and see who shows up to have a comment about it. And that's a real sea change. I think, I don't think it gets recognized enough, both in terms of really stepping up our engagement and in the workload. So a shout out to you and your staff.
Nathaniel, did I think, want to say something?
Yeah, I've
Yeah, I've got a comment on, under the policies put on pause, the student representative duties. There it says that it was paused, quote, "when it became clear that a formal understanding of the governance structure of the district student council was necessary before it could be formalized in policy and a need for additional and broader student engagement." It was my understanding that, in fact, the policy work was paused because, first because staff needed to refocus their efforts on reopening and later because we didn't want to take it up so near to the end of the year. If, in fact, it was put on pause for this reason, I am troubled that no one informed me or anyone on the council that that was the case. Is that the case or is it just different wording?
I don't know where the wording came from in the memo, Nathaniel, so I don't know if Mary, that was...
That came from me. And my, and I wrote that, it was my understanding that some of the work that, there were some questions that arose in terms of how people got on the committee, what the administrations of those schools knew about it and how they handled it and how that was addressed was still up in the air and that some decisions needed to be made about how it works and how those decisions were made at the building level and then how they inform also what we're doing as a committee.
Can I add, Mary?
Go ahead, Roseanne.
Oh, that also, I think what we learned too is that there needs to be, this desire we heard was for the adults in the system to really learn to, learn how to better embrace student voice and how to work with the DSC, but that's also an understanding of the role of the DSC. And also, I think what I heard from the DSC students was a desire for support so that it is clear at the building level what the DSC does, what it should be doing. So, that part of it. So, I think in that understanding is how, as a system, we have shared understanding of the role of the DSC and then an agreement on how we help support that work as well. So, and really, it's a systemic support, if that makes sense.
And Nathaniel, you may have been right initially, that that was why it was put on pause and then as the year, the last couple of months, these other governance issues emerged more clearly.
We should add those other reasons to the memo though, Mary, so it accurately reflects what happened and how these decisions were made.
Yes, I will do that.
Right. Well, I still think it's a bit of an issue that these other reasons were not communicated to us because, I mean, we, as, you know, the district student council actually have the experience and we've worked within the system and can provide a lot of these answers to the questions you might have around what our role is and what we think it should be, that we haven't really had a chance to go in further depth about that.
Nathaniel, I know we've hired the group Coaching Peace to work with the board and with the student representatives to really help us all get on the same page about how, you know, student voice functions in a way that we can elevate that, be consistent, make sure that you all are feeling spurred, make sure that board members are getting what they need from students. And so I think, I think part of all of this that happened is when, you know, Coaching Peace came on to do their work with both the board members and the district student council. So, we're still launching that and ramping that up. And Roseanne, can you speak to that a little more?
It's actually, we have only, we've only had Coaching Peace working with adults right now and partly because of the timing of the school year. You know, they really engage with us towards the ending of the year. And so, Nathaniel, you know, one of the things before you leave would be an opportunity to meet with you as the exiting student representative because we really need to help close that loop with what your thoughts and feedback are. But we also are bridging over to a new school year and we're, hopefully, we can be together in the same room. You know, where DSC again has some student, I'm sorry, some staff in the room when we meet, where we can have these conversations. So, that's one of the great things we're looking forward to as we go back to in-person.
And then I just wanted to say thank you, Director Lowry, for bringing up the complaint policy thing because I think that's very important. And I had a question about what's our expectation timeline-wise about next year when the deputy student representative policy can, where we can continue with that?
I think that's going to be up to the next board and the next policy committee. We can't really, we can't really make commitments on behalf of future iterations of the board or the committee. Sorry. Okay, any other comments? I just want to quickly mention a couple of things. There are a few places in here where the staff or I or both of us make recommendations about kind of carrying work forward. The first one I would mention is the student enrollment and transfer and student assignment to neighborhood school policies. And I think, and we first started looking, we as a committee first started looking at it in 2018, I think. 2018, 19. And then eventually, you know, and again, this year and both times, we sort of tabled the discussion around these policies. And I, I think what has become a little clearer, at least for me, over the course of this year as the Southeast Guiding Coalition policy has proceeded, is that in some ways, the existing policies could be adequate. I do think some changes need to happen, particularly in terms of the amount of time it takes to implement changes. But I think that these policies, I think, can be serviceable as a mechanism, to establish a mechanism for regular fear pattern changes or boundary changes to respond to demographic shifts. So, once the district gets a regular system in place where you can make sort of regular changes. But I think Director Bailey and I, over the course of this year, have concluded, or maybe I shouldn't speak on your behalf, Scott. I have concluded, largely based on conversations I had with Scott, that in order for the immediate enrollment balancing processes to have the intended effect, it is likely that the board is going to have to suspend these existing policies in order to create a more rapid timeline for implementation in order for any of the enrollment balancing stuff to actually work. So, that's going to be, you know, I'm going to be in the peanut gallery. So, I just wanted to flag that for the incoming policy committee and the board to be paying attention, to keep that on their radar as the enrollment balancing work proceeds. And then both staff and I recommend that an ethics policy that we did in 2017, 18, we did a conflict of interest policy around nepotism. But, and then there was an intention to come up with a kind of a broader policy around ethics and conflicts of interest. And because of the press of immediate business, which is endless, we didn't do that. So, it's our recommendation that the future policy committee, keep it on the agenda and try to work on. Student conduct and discipline is kind of waiting on some bargaining with PAT. We just talked about student representative duties and then the OSBA proposed revision. I would, so we started doing this in 2018, I think, working with OSBA on this. And we have, Liz and her staff have gotten the recommendations from OSBA and we've been sort of chipping away at them little by little over time. But my suggestion is that, and this is largely coming from the work I'm doing on the governance coach training with the Council of Great City Schools, but also working with OSBA. I think it might be, I think it might be useful for a future policy committee and presumably the full board at some point, to have a broader discussion about sort of what kinds of issues should be memorialized in policy as opposed to other mechanisms. And have kind of a, I mean, for lack of a better word, in my head, I'm thinking it's sort of a philosophical discussion about the function of policy, of board policy in terms of efficient and effective management of all of the work that the district as a whole is responsible for. So, that's a recommendation, mostly for me. And it, the OSBA recommendation aligns pretty closely, I think, with the recommendations coming out of the Council of Great City Schools about the portfolio of issues that warrant board policy. Anyway, and I got to use my favorite word, possuminous. So, the policy manual should be sufficiently comprehensive but also possuminous. Anyway, so the lighting's not, whatever they were.
They were brilliant and I'm hot. I would move to agenda, to...
Agenda? Okay, we can agenda.
My brain is melting, melting.
Before, before the agenda, though, I want to speak for the staff to say how much we have loved working with you, Rita and Scott, you two really, but you're not leaving. So, you have, you still have to deal with us for a while. But we have so appreciated working with you. We will miss you dearly. And in honor of your departure, we have, we will have this for you. It's...
Okay, I might have to cross out the silently though because, you know...
I was never very good at the silent part either.
We can take a magic marker to that.
I got, I got better.
I think it would be only appropriate to copy edit the mug about copy editing. So, I want to thank you, and this is not just, you know, back at you. It has been, it's been an honor to work with you guys. And I've learned a lot, so, thank you. And I still remain endlessly flummoxed at how you guys manage to keep so many balls in the air at once. I don't know how you do it. So, thank you for not letting this ball drop. Thank you for being endlessly open to suggestions, however deranged they may have been. Anyway, thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you both so much. We're going to miss you and we have learned a lot every meeting. I learned something from the students. Nathaniel, we're going to miss you too. Oscar, we're glad you're going to come back signing up for more duty, I think. You were also reassigned, but we, it feels so odd that we will have a next policy committee meeting with such a different roster. So, I'm feeling very sentimental about this meeting and I thank you all. All of the work that all of you are doing on behalf of PPS students and families is just amazing. And the volunteer effort and the countless hours you all put in. And Nathaniel's going to school at the same time. It's really remarkable. So, we just, we thank you so, so much. And here's to the Oxford comma.
Indeed.
It looks like I might have come in just at the right time and I...
Are you, where are you hiding, Julie?
Can you see her eyes there?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Okay, I am in my basement. And so, can I just say a few words? It seems like we're in the wrap-up. So, and this is directed to Rita because in 2017, we got on the board and like, there was no policy committee. There was no nothing. There was a bunch of committees about other things. And it was clear that we had a lot of work to do to fix some, at the time, things that like weren't in compliance with statute. I mean, there weren't even like policy disagreements. They were just wrong. And Rita was a, I'm trying to think who the other, the third member was. Anyway.
It was Mike.
It was Mike. Okay. We had a task force. It wasn't even a committee. And we got after like the really big things that like weren't in compliance with the statute. And then it eventually evolved into the policy committee. And so, this is, and so, we both have been on the policy task force of the committee for the last four years and we have had like, like great, I think, conversations, discussions, arguments. And I think, I will say, Rita, like your engagement has, like, our policy work is way better and our policy book, it's not even a book anymore. It used to be a book, but now a virtual book, is way better because of your applying, your, you know, 30 years of being a parent, being a, both a critic and a cheerleader of the district and, you know, bringing sort of like your real life experience to making our policy better. And, you know, I've enjoyed it all, almost all of it. But like you made me think harder about things and I think you, you know, made, brought community voice in that often hadn't been in the committee's, you know, been part of the committee discussion. So, I want to, I want to thank you and I really will miss you because even when we've disagreed, you've sharpened my thinking or made me think about something differently that, you know, I hadn't, hadn't occurred to me before. So, I really am going to miss you because this work would not have been the same for the last four years if you hadn't been at pretty much every policy committee meeting. So, thank you for your service whether as a committee member or as a committee chair or the task force member and keeping, moving us forward. It was a great body of work that you were part of moving ahead, all of us together. Well, thank you.
Thank you. It's nice of you to say that and I could say exactly... Thank you. It's nice of you to say that, and I could say exactly the same about you. You have been, you've been a force for this committee for four years. And you've made me rethink things. You've got, you know, we approach things sometimes the same, sometimes differently. And I have been endlessly impressed by your attention to detail, which is really important in policy work. And I've learned, I mean, everything you said about me, I would say about you. So I'm going to miss this, I'm going to miss this committee.
Julia, did you see the mug that Mary got them?
I did not. I was, I was, I was, the one thing that's beautiful is like, I don't have a point of view about the Oxford comma.
You have to see the mug here.
This is from all of us. It's not just for me.
And Rita said she needed to cross out the part that said silently. So it just reminded me of the pencils you got us at the beginning of this year, or whenever that was, last year.
Yeah, we'll be editing for Cup.
I think what kind of made this work is, as a PE major, I don't even know what the Oxford comma is. And so it allowed me to think about all different things besides that. And it gave you and Ailey and everybody else who cares about the Oxford comma, like, the ability to dominate that domain.
Yeah, 100% pro Oxford comma over here. No doubts about it.
Okay, so I am going to, I'm going to bring this meeting to a close. And we're going to adjourn and adjourn. And thank you again, everybody. It's been, it's been an endlessly instructive and entertaining four years. So thank you, everybody. So we are now officially adjourned. Bye.